We'll call the regular meeting of Barstown City Council, the April 24th meeting, to order. Do you have any groups or individuals that have anything to present to the council this evening to start off the meeting? Okay. You don't have any bids or contracts or anything, so we'll go on into our HRB recommendations, and I'll turn that over to City Attorney, Mr. Buck.
Thank you, Mayor. These are the Historic Review Board's recommendations from Tuesday, April 17th. COA 1844, Kerry Sign Company applicant Danielle Gross-Goss, skeet owner, request to install signage at 8 Old Bluefield Road. Recommendation approval to install the proposed signage. COA 18-46, Edelen Signs applicant, Barbara Manningley owner, request to install signage at 107 East Flage A Street. Recommendation approval to propose signage. Conditions: The awning metal brackets must be removed in the final design of the sign bracket to be approved by the preservation coordinator. See COA 18-47, Edelen Signs applicant, Pat Harmon owner, request to install signage at 212 North 3rd Street. Recommendation approval to install the proposed signage. Conditions: Final design of the sign will be approved by the preservation coordinator. The size of the sign is to be considered and modified based on business location, the scrolls on the bracket, and the final design of the bracket will be approved by the preservation coordinator, and the sign will be reduced to meet the criteria for signage in historic district. COA 1840, Drew Cullsbine applicant-owner, request to install new roof on Solarium at 216 West Flage A Street. Recommendation approval to install a copper roof over the Solarium. COA 18-41, Clear Properties LLC applicant-owner, request to install an AC unit at 112 West Flage A Street. Conditional approval, recommendation approval to install HVAC unit at the proposed location. Condition: The final screening material for the HVAC unit will be approved by the preservation coordinator. G, COA 18-42, Clear Properties LLC applicant-owner, request to install a new roof at 112 West Flage A Street. Recommendation approval to install new roof. Conditions: The roof will be replaced with the driftwood dark brown colored shingles, and the entire roof will be replaced. COA 18-43, Clear Properties LLC applicant-owner, request to paint the building trim, windows and doors at 112 West Flage A Street. Recommendation approval to paint the building trim, windows and doors. The proposed colors. Condition: The stone on the front of the building will not be painted, and the aluminum trim is not a significant architectural feature of the building. And the rest were tabled.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Then I would ask then for a motion to approve the recommendations of HRB on COA 1844, COA 1846, 1847, 1848, 1849, 1850, 1851, 1852, 1853, it looks like. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the motion to approve all the recommendations. I have a second.
Second.
Second, with Councilman Copeland. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, citywide saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Back up just a second. I overlooked a couple of things. First of all, we have two councilmen that were not able to be with us tonight. They had some kind of last-minute family situations that came up that prevented them from being here tonight. And to my left, you'll see a new face, Mary Riley, typically is here as a city clerk. She's gone for training this week for city clerk, so we have our new assistant city clerk, Jennifer Egemeyer, sitting in in her stead, and hopefully you don't cause her too many problems. Keeping up with all this this evening. So Jennifer, thank you for being with us, and welcome. I'm going to kind of move some of the agenda items around a little bit, just so we can flow of the meeting, I think, will be more practical this way. So I'm going to go to minutes. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes of the April 10th meeting. If there's no corrections or additions, improvement by unanimous consent. Next, I'd like to go up to city council member comments, and the reason for that is I think we need to have a little discussion and maybe some clarification on some of the first readings tonight before we actually have them. And two of them regarding the mayor and the council, actually, the first readings do need some addition of possibility of some financial figures in them before we could do a first reading. But I'll address the first one. It's just a, we're kind of cleaning up an ordinance related to the outdoor cafes. I'll give you some background on that. Years ago, I guess during Mayor Hibbs's term, we actually had a prohibition for any outside, any displays whatsoever on city streets. The previous administration, it felt like it was a safety issue, and they passed the ordinance, and prohibited having any kind of displays on the streets. I mean, so Spalins and drugstores and the stores on Flage A, none of the retail stores could even have a table with marked-down merchandise or clearance sale items on it and so forth. So during Mayor Hibbs's administration, when I was on the council, and Roland, you might have been there at the time, we changed it. We changed it and allowed displays on the sidewalks. Well, that was followed by requests from the restaurants to, you know, I think it's called Alfresco, Alfresco Dining, to permit dining outside of their facilities. And the liquor licenses back then were tied to food, and so it just overlapped into that license that if you're going to have outside dining, 50% food was required and so forth. That was just before we had facilities like Tap on Third, Moses Black, Xavier's Bourbon Marketplace, Colonel Masters Bourbon House, et cetera. So we're just trying to clean that language up so that those type of facilities are on the same playing field as the retail people and the restaurant people. So that's the reason for the clarification of that ordinance. The next one, I think we need to talk a little bit about, obviously, is the revisions in our ordinance related to the animals. You know, we talked about, there's been a request to permit the raising of chickens within the city limits, and we had some discussion at a previous meeting. I think we now got a draft of the ordinance. I think the draft contains a few changes from what was originally submitted and drawn up by our city attorney.
I'm sorry. Could we table this one? Is that possible?
We're just going to, this will be a first reading tonight, so there's not going to be a vote, so what's the reason for wanting to table it?
Well, I would really like for the other council members to be present and hear their thoughts in the open and to discuss, so. I know that several of them reached out to me, and knowing that Councilman Sheckles, I didn't know Councilman Doan's wasn't going to be here. And so, you know, I really wasn't in favor of discussing it tonight because, you know, I feel that everyone should be able to weigh in on this because it is involving the public directly, so.
Well, it might be appropriate then to table the other two. We'd have to have a special call meeting to do the, if we're making any changes to the mayor of the council's salary, we'll have one more meeting the first of May, and then we'd have to have a special call meeting for the second reading. But I think it is right to have all six of them present for the discussion.
I would concur with that, Mayor.
John, what do you think?
Oh, yeah, I mean...
Because we do have to come up with, if we are going to amend the mayor or the council, there has to be a financial, at least something that can be voted on. It doesn't necessarily mean everybody's going to vote on, but we've got to at least get something in the ordinance. And so I think input from six would be, and I didn't realize when we made the agenda, obviously, we're going to be too short tonight.
And some of these are going to maybe take some working back and forth on different provisions and changing things. It might not hurt to have, if everybody's okay with doing a special meeting on that, I don't have a problem because, you know, it's, I confer, say, turning for the meeting to see what changes, if we can make any changes, because I saw two council members weren't going to be here after a first reading, and he said, other than punctuation and technical errors, that, you know, we couldn't like change any figures or any substance in the ordinance. So, and some of these are going to require consensus on.
Sure. I think that's a good point, Councilman Copeland. I think, I'm okay with that because I wasn't anticipating the discussion. David, just in the last half hour, said his situation came up. All right, well, with that being said, though, I think we could still take up the first reading of the outdoor cafe. I think that would be okay. Let me, while we're still in councilman comments, to the other hand, if councilmen have any other things they want to bring before the council this evening, while we're into that part of the agenda. I've got a couple of things, maybe some housekeeping here. It's the election season right now, and we've had, I think, about three requests from candidates for county-wide offices, contact the city, and wanted to come and be put on the agenda and so forth. And none of them are current office holders, so I guess they don't know that the city council is really not a forum for campaigning. You know, it's really a legislative body for legislative process to handle the city business. So we've told them that this has not been something that we have done in the past, certainly not being discriminatory against them because it's a county election and not a city election, or it's related to their party affiliation, or anything like that. You know, it's no different than fiscal court. You know, you don't have candidates showing up to fiscal court and, you know, getting two minutes to address the court, talking about their platform or all that. You don't get to go to Frankfurt, stand up in front of the House of Representatives and campaign, or Congress or whatever, school boards. It's just, it's just not the right forum. So that's how I've explained it to these people, but there might be others out there, so I just thought we need to have some housekeeping here that we're not trying to discriminate against anybody, and it keeps them, no offense, but there's really not a whole lot of people here that they would be able to be in front of, with the exception of the media talking about them later, but there's plenty of opportunities for that. You know, even in the fall, we never let, you know, we've got Southern Lakes, we've got 12, 14 city council candidates. We don't allow them all to come in and do their thing. So that's how I've explained it to them. I think some of them understand it.
Well, I think we go to any issue that's not relevant to the council, like somebody want to get up and, if it wasn't running for office, and want to complain about the national debt or something, I don't, you know, this, of course, we can't change that, so why? Other than get a public forum, you know, and once we start that, oh my gosh, everybody wants a public forum, and any issue is going to be coming up there, and we'll never get out.
We don't have the three-minute rule on that kind of stuff, on when it's implemented, but we just, we do like to, certainly accept input from the public related to city business and things that we...
Oh, well, I wish we had more people come up, you know what I'm saying?
So I just wanted to let that know because we had another request today, and I wanted to kind of clarify that. We did do, we put out our request and proposal last week for architect and engineering on the renovation of the Newcombe property for the fire department, and also working with us to develop plans for some renovations that will go on with City Hall that went out last week. Been working on the budget with Tracy and I, we've had two meetings on it. Hopefully, we may have at least a first draft for you all late this week or early next week, so we'll have, you know, four, two months for us to get into it and work on it. Now that we've gotten some answers out of Frankfurt, that helped us be able to fill in some pensions on the pension side of things and insurance. But the renovation part of this RFP that I spoke about, we may not be that far along by the time we select the architect and engineering on it, have them develop a set of plans and do some preliminary estimates. It might be difficult to have all that in place by July 1st, to have it in the budget. So obviously, that would require, you know, next year's budget. Once we have those numbers, assuming we approve some of those renovations, if not all, we would have to amend our budget, but I'll be bringing that to you. I just don't think we'll be that far along with this, to have it on the budget we'll be considering in June. Also, we'll be, obviously, having to amend the current budget to reflect the purchase of these properties anyway, which I think we are going to be closing on the Kentucky Home Village property by the end of this week or early next week. Tim and our attorneys, we've got the survey, and it's being done, we're working on the title and the deed, so once that work is done, we'll be closing on, it looks like the Kentucky Home Village property first, and then the other two follow.
Church should be maybe this week also.
Exactly, this week would be good. So those are just some things I wanted to address in this part of the meeting about where we had some comments by the council. All right. Then we'll go down to Tim to first reading on the outdoor cafes. I guess we need someone to introduce B 2018-07, Chapter 122, as it relates to outdoor cafes.
Mayor, if I'm in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 2018-07, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance relating to Chapter 122 Outdoor Cafes of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances, and ask it to be read in full.
Thank you. I will do that. Ordinance number B 2018-07, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance relating to Chapter 122 Outdoor Cafes of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances. The city council of Barstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows. The amendments to be made to Chapter 122 Outdoor Cafes, Section 122.02 Permit Required and 122.05 Forms and Conditions of the City of Barstown's Code of Ordinances as follows. Section 122.02 Permit Required. B, permits shall be issued only to businesses properly licensed by the city which wish to provide service to its patrons or locate tables and chairs or other objects directly related to their business of food and refreshment service on the public property immediately adjacent to their business's strike. No outdoor cafe permit shall be issued to any business that sells alcoholic beverages unless that business establishes that at least 50% of its gross revenue is derived from the sale of food in the strike. Section 122.05 Forms and Conditions, subsection B, in addition to naming the permit E and any other information deemed appropriate by the administrator, the permit shall contain the following conditions. Subsection 1, each permit shall be effective for one fiscal year from strike, July 1st through June 30th in strike. Add, May 1st through April 30th in addition. Prorated at, prorated to $37.50 for three months or less, and subject to annual renewal unless revoked or suspended prior to expiration. No fees will be refunded for revocations or periods of suspensions. All ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately on its passage, approval and publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Tim. To just wrap the summary of it, can I ask for a motion then to, we don't need it, we're just first, we're just going to go on. We've tabled the other three, so we'll move on then to reports to staff and committees, which Councilman Doan's, we have had electric and cable committee meeting on April 3rd. We've got the minutes there. I know Councilman Copeland, you were there, I think, at the meeting, and Councilman Williams. Anything you all want to add to the discussion, or let the minutes speak for themselves?
I'll let all five pages of the minutes speak for themselves, Mayor.
Y'all covered a lot.
Pretty detailed.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot going on.
Pretty detailed.
Cable and internet, so appreciate y'all's work on that. And then you have the same on the programming, cable and TV programming committee, that theirs wasn't quite as detailed, but I'll let those minutes speak for themselves. And we've tabled the city officials' compensation for this evening, so we'll go on to cemetery deeds. We have Angie Greenwell for one grave and Eddie Hood for three graves. Approved that by unanimous consent, is that okay? Just a couple announcements. Joe, I think the chief wants you to mention that there's still some time for people to contribute. You going to cover that for the Road to Hope?
That's correct. Amy, we're coming up on the fifth anniversary, and Amy will be riding in the Law Enforcement 2018 Road to Hope during Police Week, which is May 13th through 19th, and we're still receiving donations, and we hope you give her by the end of the week to be able to provide her a nice little package.
Who, I'm answering, check tonight, I walked out, forgot, did you make it to Road to Hope, or?
Yes, sir, Law Enforcement United 2018, 2018 Road to Hope.
Okay, just like it says there.
Yes, sir.
Want to drop your vise station?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anything else? What was today about again?
The Police Week is May 13th through 19th. She will actually ride, I believe it begins on the 17th, and she'll ride away into DC.
The next thing on your announcement is, the City of Barstown and Nelson County have been named one of the top 10 micropolitans in the United States, and "micropolitan" is not a word that's very common, so I'll just kind of read what it said about, and I'll discuss it in a little more detail, but it's quite, I think, some recognition and honor to be in the top 10 category for the entire country. And this was from Site Selection Magazine, which is a magazine that has to do with tracking communities and their preparedness and readiness and so forth for attracting investment, industry investment, so forth. But it says here, "The Office of Management and Budget in the White House defines a micropolitan statistical area as one or more adjacent counties that have at least one urban core area of at least 10,000 but less than 50,000, plus adjacent territory that has a high degree of social and economic integration with the core as measured by community ties." But the award for Barstown, and there were some other cities also in the top 10 in this particular year here in Kentucky. I think there was three or four others that made it to the top 10, Richmond, Dammel and ourselves, and Frankfurt, which is pretty good. But what that recognition was based on is in 2017, it's based on announced projects and expansions in 2017. For our category, what helped us be in that top 10% was, we had eight projects announced in 2017, industrial manufacturing-related projects totaling $286 million. It's 350 new jobs. Eight projects, two of them completely new facilities, six of them expansions. And that's quite an accomplishment for a city our size to have that much new investment. Most of these projects are already started or will start very soon. Takigawa, of course, last week. The only one that hasn't started officially is Kentucky Owl, which was a major, with $149 million of that number, but they will be breaking ground, I think, about a year in. The rest of these projects, these other seven, are already going, so a great accomplishment. And I bring that up just because, you know, people that are in this business looking for places to locate and so forth, keep up with this stuff. And it's a testament, you know, first I'd like to start by saying thank you to the staff and employees of the city, the city council, because, you know, it takes work with many, many agencies to generate this kind of investment in a community. Not one individual, not one entity or organization can make this happen. We have to work with the fiscal court, we have to work with planning and zoning, and, you know, and also when I say that, remember, planning is a big important part of this because you've got to have real estate that is ready for this kind of investment, has the infrastructure for this kind of investment, has the safety and first responders available. I mean, it takes a lot. You've got to have an industrial development corporation that is, you know, the marketing arm, and helps provide the information that is vital for these people that are making the decisions. So Chamber of Commerce, and, but at the end of the day, it's, people probably underestimate this, but it's just the people in general in our community that are making a difference. Mr. Takigawa, last week, in his remarks, mentioned about one thing, at the end of the day, when they went from over 100 to 50, and then down to five, and then it became one, and then to make that decision, invest $46 million. He basically said it was the way we made him feel, the warmth he felt in this community. So I thought that was very telling, but I think it's very consistent, that all these things, by us, there's a lot of synergy right now here in our community that is working very well, and this recognition speaks for itself. $286 million, 350 new jobs, and our unemployment rate right now is 3.1%, the state average is 3.8%, the national average is around 4%. You know, things are going well, and I just wanted to thank you people here tonight who have made part of that. We made our contribution at the city level, you all have come together, we've had to put together some incentive packages, and, you know, it's paying off, so I really appreciate that, and I think it's a great recognition for Barstown and Nelson County. Last thing I would make as an announcement in our May meeting, the first meeting, LG and E will be here to make a presentation, talk to us about our new franchise agreement that will be coming before us, so I just want to let you know ahead of time that...
And we should have an ordinance for first reading.
Right. And we may also have an industrial revenue bond presentation possibly at that meeting too, we're not sure on that yet, so it's another major investment coming this way possibly. Anyone else have anything?
Yes. Do you have something? Go ahead.
I just wanted to talk about the special meeting date, since, you know, the Tuesday will be the first of May, and then after that's Derby Week, so I think we ought to maybe discuss what day we'll have that before, or we might maybe necessarily wait till Tuesday, so everybody can mark it on the calendar, or if we got a need to have it one before next week.
We have to do it before the Monday, don't we?
Yeah, you have to do it.
So it has to be later this week? The other one has to be later this week, where we do the first reading, or sometime next week, that everybody can be here?
Yeah, and if you did a special meeting for first read, you'd want to make the agenda for first read and discussion, the discussion prior, because we still have to fill in the blank for, on those. Now, the, in terms of the animal ordinance, that can go, that doesn't have the same time constraint, but it can go two regular meetings, but I'd be better on that.
Yeah. The two, the other two, yeah, well, I don't know how we, I don't know when both Councilman Shekels or Councilman Doan's will be for sure available. I know Friday's not a good day this week to have one.
He'll be back Wednesday.
Yeah.
Late Wednesday.
Can you do it like Monday and Tuesday, or is it?
24 hours.
Well, maybe Monday would be better.
We already have one Monday, next Monday, or, excuse me, no, you're right, that's next Tuesday, so yes, Monday would-
Monday would be the 30th?
Yes.
So, do you all want it maybe in the evening, or would you rather at noon time, or, I'm open, I'm flexible.
Well, at noon, we have, well, what date is that? Oh, it's the 30th, oh, okay, doesn't matter.
It's the 5th, my bad.
Yeah.
Or is evening okay for you all? Five o'clock?
I'm open all days. I'll conform to everybody's schedule.
If, if we turn it and have it on Tuesday, which is our regular working session, it's 24 hours, so we'd have to-
24 hours, you'd have to-
About reading.
I mean, it would actually, it'd actually be better if it was lunchtime on the 30th, if you were doing the 30th.
I don't think it'd take a lot of time, so how about we do it noon on Monday? Have a special call meeting for those two agenda items with some prior discussion before the first reading. Let, Tim, I'll let you put the agenda.
Yeah, we'll, I'll have Tim.
I guess we have plenty of time to get up the motions and everything, right?
That's good. I'm glad you brought that up. So, Monday, the 30th at noon. Okay, Councilman Hope, do you have anything?
Mm-hmm, just reminding you guys that Friday is the Kentucky Black Caucus Summit, so we invite you to attend, and also that, right after the summit on that Friday, the city is sponsoring a hospitality, and that is for everyone in the community to come out and share their thoughts and network and mingle and get to meet their, their legislators and talk about some of the issues that are going on, or not speak about anything at all, and just-
Will that be at Cresso's also?
It'd be at Cresso's.
So, oh, it starts at 8:00, I think, on Friday?
Um, 5:30 to-
Not coming. Morning, it starts at 8:00?
Yes, yes, um, that starts at 8:00, continental breakfast, and then at 9:00, the program actually starts, so registration is through 9:00.
I'm glad you said that.
And then there is the Kentucky League of Cities, I don't know if you guys received this, but real quick, they're having a city officials academy, it's Academy 2, it's on cybersecurity, but also, what is interesting is that they're having advanced ethical dilemmas, advanced open meetings, open record issues, legislative updates, police officer bill of rights updates, franchise fees, understanding franchise fees, vacancies, appointments and removal powers. Some of these things we've already been through, but I thought what was really good was the hacker war stories, and that affects any and every city in the state of Kentucky. So, just giving you the information, if you choose to go, great, not, it's May 23rd through 25th in Bowling Green. So, that is it, thank you.
Thank you. Keep us up to date on that, so the reception's 5:30, is that correct?
5:30 to 7:00, and then there's a Black Carpet Bourbon Experience from 7:00 to 11:00, and that'll be held in the loft at Spalding Hall, and Heaven Hill and Barton's and Lux Row will be giving tastings of their fine distilled spirits, and there will be free food. It does cost to get in, it is an education fundraiser, so the tickets are $25 at the door and $40 for a VIP and swag back. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else got anything? If not, then I'd ask for a motion for adjournment.
Summon.
I'm asking for Councilman Hope to have a second.
Go ahead.
Is that for Councilman Kelly in the discussion? If they will say aye, and opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
This one, right?
Yes.